Why didn't it say recording in progress?
All right, call this meeting to order, this workshop to order. Um, roll call. Roll call. You can ask me and I. We can do that.
It was a workshop, so.
Yeah, it was a workshop, so we. Head for dawn. You know. Councilor.
I'm here.
Councilor Smith, here. Councilor Wood, here. Councilor Miller, here. Councilor Pointer. And then Councilor Ritter. I'm here. All right, so after I agenda this code enforcement. So let's talk about these. Nuisances.
Mayor, before you all start going, I'll just let you know that on Zoom, we have Jason from DEQ, who can speak to, like educate you all on what they do enforce DEQ while coming and enforcing any activity they might have going on in our city. And then we also have Gary Darnell, who's our city attorney. And he'll be able to be some knowledge and wealth of information on our code.
Okay. So we want to start with. You're sort of DEQ.
Jason, if you'll unmute, you should be able to speak.
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi there.
So, DEQ. We deal mainly with permitting transfer stations, landfills, compost. Larger compost facilities in the state. So our role is more of a permitting agency. And making sure that the permits are being dealt with correctly. So we deal with larger sums of waste. So. If I may, I kind of have just, it's a two-page PowerPoint, just if I can share that with you. I don't know if you can see my screen or not, or if you're just hearing me.
They're just hearing you, but let me, you're getting into new territory for me.
That's fine, we can go, we can just stay status quo, I don't want to force any issues here.
There should be a way you could request to share a screen.
There is.
Let's see. Didn't work out.
I can see and hear him.
Hmm. Well, we can not.
We can see him, but we could have.
Hmm. No, this is our screen.
Yeah, no, no problem, we can just talk our way through it, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to continue that way, Jason.
That's fine.
Did you just want to go ahead with?
Yeah, so. We deal with larger amounts of solid waste and in our jurisdiction is actually based on the fact that whether or not a person needs a permit for what they're doing. So probably the best example I have for that, as you know, you have a property right there on Lake, Lakeshore, that. We've estimated it's about 125 cubic yards of solid waste material that's on the property. That is definitely more than enough for DEQ to become involved. And say that they would need a solid waste disposal permit through the state of Oregon to retain that material on their property. And in that case, that does give me the jurisdiction to follow up with a warning letter. And what we did initially was send a warning letter with the opportunity to correct. The property owners decided that they were not at fault, did nothing wrong, of course. When which we responded with a pre-enforcement notification of now you have an additional 35, 40 days to fix the problem before the Department of Environmental Qualities Office of Compliance and Enforcement becomes involved and issues a fine. In that situation. The Office of Compliance has received that request from me and are determining all the factors involved to see exactly what the amount of the fine is going to be and what the corrective actions are going to be from that point. More than likely, the normal would be you have a limited amount of time to take that material from your property to an actual permitted transfer station. And have the material disposed of correctly by state law, and then there would also be an applied fine, which could be pretty hefty. Multiple other complaints from the city, normally it's the nicest way to say it is a dumpster that is overflowing with trash. Unfortunately, I don't have a permit for that. So that's too small of an amount for me to have jurisdiction over. So normally in that case, that would be referred back to the city in hopes that they could get some type of compliance through their municipal ordinance.
Any questions?
What is, what is the minimum allowance of solid waste that to require a permit?
That's the fun part, that becomes the judgment of the Department of Environmental Quality. Normally, we would say anywhere between 50 to 100 cubic yards, it depends on the material, it depends on how close it is to a waterway. Is it going to be an air quality issue, you know, what's the, what's the extra factors? There could be a hazardous waste substance that's involved in that solid waste pile that is going to take precedence over others. So it is relatively a larger amount to think of it as. You know, everybody's probably seen a 40-yard dump, a dumpster that people will get while they're re-roofing their, their houses that they put on the property and fill that full. You're looking at more than that amount is usually the, the situation DEQ gets involved in.
Thank you.
I have a question, Jason. I know that the city of Lakeside sent over quite a few properties to you guys. Did any, are any of those properties able to be, besides the one on North Lake, able to be handled through you guys?
Unfortunately, I do have a couple that I still need to go take a look at because they, they did trickle in, I did get a pack of about five or six complaints at one time, which was, it's a much easier day to go to one place and look at multiple properties. So I appreciate that when it comes in, but most of the time they trickle in one, one or two at a time, and I do have time, hopefully on Wednesday, I have a, a meeting in Coos Bay that I'm going to then come up and hopefully get a look at the remaining properties. But unfortunately, the, the ones that I've seen so far just haven't met the idea of us having to make them get a permit for a disposal site.
Thank you. Oh, I have one more question, sorry. So the dumping of like raw sewage and waste and things like that, you guys don't handle as far as in the streets and things like that? Motorhomes, whatnot?
Right, motorhomes is kind of an interesting dynamic because like I have five counties, so I have Coos, Curry, Douglas, Josephina, Jackson, Jackson County that I handle. And only out of those, those ones, Jackson County actually has a recreational vehicle ordinance through their county ordinance guides that only allows an RV to be in place for no more than 30 days. For them, it makes it really simple, I did work for Jackson County for 12 years in code enforcement, so I know that one really well. The, the reason for that ordinance was to not allow that type of issue to happen. If you have a 30-day window, usually you can get the RVs removed before you have a sewage issue. My remaining four counties, I don't, I have not seen any ordinances even in, in the works for that. Because if Coos County had it, I'd probably be in contact with Mr. Ballmer over at the Coos County Code Enforcement, and hopefully would have had the RVs removed before you had a sewage issue. Again, then we're dealing with a municipality inside of that county. And it's going to come down to whose jurisdiction that is, and unfortunately, it's not DEQ's.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify for some of the citizens who may not know that information. Do I have anything else? Morning.
Hey, can I ask a question? No.
Jeremy, Mayor.
Okay, so. Um. Gosh. What's your question?
Well, I was wondering, I know that they help with septic systems. When septic systems aren't working, I was able to file a complaint with DEQ.
Mayor, if you're gonna have, you probably should go up to the mic, because we gotta get it, if you're gonna have questions asked. We're gonna start.
When we had a problem with septic system, we were able to contact DEQ. And they were able to handle it underneath that program. I kind of want to know how that got handled that way.
Yes, so unfortunately, DEQ is broken into multiple fragments, as, as you know, we do deal with solid waste, which is my specialty, I deal with solid waste and hazardous waste. We also have an air quality group that even has a breakdown where there's an asbestos specialist. Then we have water quality, and that is multiple different facets with water quality. One, also dealing with underground tanks, another that deals with septic. I do not know the septic program as well as I know the solid waste. But I do always encourage people, no matter what the complaint, no matter what the amount of the solid waste or what the, the actual violation may be. If they have an opportunity to get online, the DEQ through oregon.gov. If you can get to the DEQ page, there is a complaint section that we do encourage people to fill out. There's multiple specialties through DEQ. And dealing with sewage may, may come back to a solid waste complaint, it just depends on the specialists who take those complaints in, on where the complaints end up. And as small as we still think our state is. I, I know the people in the Medford office that I work with, I admit very few that are in the Eugene or Portland office. But there are specialists for multiple different categories.
Thank you. Okay, so did you say that the city attorney has something?
He's online to answer any questions or give his opinion about anything, the code.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, yeah, Ryan. I, Jason, I just want to thank you for joining us and for the information, it was really helpful, we go.
You're welcome, again, feel free to contact me, I, I, I will never profess to know everything, but I do know quite a few very smart people that we can at least get you in contact with if needed.
Thank you.
All right, so anybody have any other questions? Or him? Nope. Anyone, nobody? Okay. I know. We had some conversation this morning about it. People are trying to do different things, but we we have to work as a group and we have to be careful because we have to be a team. So. If there's something that you're gonna hand out, you just want to be careful that everybody gets it, or I mean, it's just your thoughts, just let us know that. Is is there anything else at all? I mean, does anybody have anything to add?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about as far as handing it up, but I mean, there's obviously a prescribed process. And that's what we, that's what we need to do, we need to go through the process that the city has for, for these.
And, and, and this is where you might want to get the city attorney involved, because this was my concern was with the process. And, and so I would defer to our city attorney to their, their state code, and I guess there's some statutes, our code is not up to date, which is what I keep trying to say. And so there are certain procedures that may be in our code that may not be legal. And so I, this is where I would have your, your city attorney advise you, if you have any kind of thoughts, process to our code.
If I may, I thought maybe a good starting point is to figure out what we're doing now. Melissa can let us know what she's doing for code enforcement. Assess that, see what our ordinance says to do. See the roadblocks, maybe try to work through some of the roadblocks, maybe not, maybe ask the attorney any questions that might pop up. But, I mean, a good starting point might be to know what we're currently doing and what's the holdup after that. But.
Yeah, so. You know, beat a dead horse, staff time, I mean, we have two of us in the office. Right now, the way we handle code enforcement is by word of mouth, basically Dennis going out, making contact within 24 hours, especially with the RVs, you also have breaking off here to lose my train of thought, but you have different types of code enforcement, as you can tell from your code. So you have a homeless issue with people living in RVs and vehicles, and then you have just, oh, for lack of a better term, junk, abatement style. So if it's an RV and it's somebody's home, that's a whole different issue we're dealing with, and that gets into that homeless ordinance. And so it's, it, it's a vicious cycle, and so you can do a homeless ordinance that the state mandated by July that we didn't do because of enforcement. And you can prescribe a place for the homeless to go and camp overnight. And have that place picked out, or different times of day where you want them to be. If they don't go there, you still have an enforcement issue, you still have a code that has to be enforced. And the police aren't going to enforce it because it's our special, it's our code. And so you still have to have somebody go out there and, and try to make contact and move them along, that's exactly what we're doing now, we try to make contact, find out what their times are, I know Dennis still gives a lot of his own money out for gas and to get them on the road again, but we're handling it that way, we make contact within 24 hours, documentation, that's on me, I haven't been real good, it's busy and I just try to get what we can do. If it's junk. Our code has a procedure, and I was reading through the code, I've read through it about 10 times now, and I tried to map out and do a flow chart, I tried to figure out how we would do this, and you have to understand that some of these, these areas, some of these homes, they have built up, this was not overnight, this was not since I got here, this is not since the person before me got here, this is stuff that's been there and accumulating for years, and these, the ones that everybody notices and is talking about primarily. And so our code basically says you have five days to clean it up, and then you abate, and depending on vehicles, and I think the attorney can speak more clearly on depending on what's in that yard or what's in that property, you have to have a warrant to go on there, so you have a legal procedure. And I'll let him get into that whole, what that entails, so we're not really set up, the citation book that they ordered is a traffic citation book. You know, as for the hair color, weight, size of the person, and so I just don't know how set up at this very moment we are to do anything more unless we get a procedure in place that we're all comfortable with, that we have the staff and the time, and we can do it correctly and make it go, and I'm fine with that, we just need to make sure our ordinance is correct, the procedure is well documented on how it's going to work, and we have the right equipment and the right staff.
I have a question about, you said a warrant to go on the person's property to deliver the notice to them, or to abate?
You have.
Because you can post it on their, you send it by registered mail.
That's one of the steps, that's a step, but the other step is you have to post it, and to know what's on the property, you have to go on, so in other words, if the vehicle's a trash vehicle, or if it's a derelict vehicle, or you have to know what you're abating, you have to see this stuff, you have to see the trash, and so you have to actually document that, you have to go on the property to do that, and so. And, and the attorney can, Gary, Gary's on the Zoom, and he can explain that more. But. That's what our, our ordinance says, is you have, if it's on private property, you have to have a warrant, and you have to be able to get the registration, you have to be able to find out who owns the vehicle, if it's a vehicle, and a lot of these have a lot of vehicles. The other thing you might, we might want to discuss is our ordinance talks about private property and public property right of way, and because we don't have sidewalks in our town, a lot of people have encroached on the right of way, and so a lot of our ordinance would, would also hit a lot of people who have traditionally parked their machinery, their campers, their RVs. And even though it's off the road and nobody would even know it's a nuisance, it would be qualified, and so when you're gonna enforce, we have to know exactly what we're enforcing, you, you're gonna enforce everybody, and you're gonna enforce the ordinance the way it's written, and so we, we would need to understand that, too. But I think, Gary, if you're on, can you, you might want to elaborate more where I am not doing so well with the state requirements?
Well, good evening first. The state has very specific requirements for abatement, if you will, impoundment of abandoned or disabled vehicles. It's fairly precise. The procedures differ depending on whether the vehicle is assessed at $500 or more. That assessment is done by an expert. They certify what the vehicle's worth is, and based on that assessment, you have certain types of notice, certain numbers of days before you can actually take that vehicle under your control. A whole bunch of procedures that follow after you have impounded the vehicle. So, right now, your nuisance ordinance doesn't comply with what these, the statutes require. Generally, they follow the statute, but the statute is pretty precise in terms of time, timeframes, and procedures. One of the things I noticed, and by, by way of background, one of the things that I do in my agency is to provide hearings officer services. So I've been Lane County's land use and infraction hearings official for well over 20 years, and I do the city of Eugene's infraction work as well as the Lane Air Regional Pollution Authority, which applies DEQ administrative rules. So in looking at your nuisance ordinance, which was requested by Ms. Beth, Betham, one thing really jumped out at me, and that was there was an emphasis on abatement as opposed to penalties. In working with Lane County, Lane County very seldom does an abatement where they go in and clean up the property, that's only after they've, the property owner has accumulated a large number of, of fines which have been turned into liens, and at a certain point, then the county forecloses on the property, they own the property, and at that time, they send in public works and they clean it up. That's a very onerous procedure. In most cases, the county's compliance department relies on the penalty process. So they penalize the property owner, and if the person is not the property owner, they can also be penalized. They have the right to a hearing if they contest the penalty. Ultimately, then you can slap a lien on the, the property, and at some point down the road, when that property sales, sells, you can secure that penalty, or you may want to force foreclosure yourselves. But I guess what I'm emphasizing is that most of the jurisdictions I work with rely on the penalty process more than the abatement process, the abatement process is complicated, takes a lot of staff time. In, in Lakeside's case, you'd have to go to the municipal court, get a search warrant, essentially. Go on the property. At that time, you can abate the nuisance, you go back to the, the municipal judge, tell him or her what you've abated, and how the inspection proceeded. I've noticed that your code provides for a maximum penalty of $750. But it doesn't provide any objective criteria for the staff to determine what a penalty should be. Somewhere between $1 and $750. Most of the infraction ordinances I work with have administrative penalty matrix where you weigh a number of factors in terms of setting the fine, you look at the history of the property owner, whether there's been previous penalties of the same sort, whether the nuisance was by negligence or was intentional. A, a number of factors are looked at, whether there was any commercial benefit from what was being done on the property. And on the basis of the, how you number those factors, you develop an objective formula for the fine, and that's a daily fine, and then that's how you assess the property. So. There's a lot of changes that could be made to the your ordinance to make it safer and more efficient in terms of being used.
Can we make those changes? Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Be a good start.
Yeah. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, our, our ordinance definitely need to be brought up to meet.
So would you suggest us looking at the state ordinance for abatement, and then try to update our ordinances appropriate?
I, I believe the great thing about cities and municipalities is there's always a better one out there that works, that's been updated, and we just can borrow and you can do a wholesale replace, you know, we can implement it and make sure it works for us, so you can just dump this one and add the other one. And I, I think Gary and I have talked about that, so.
Okay, so you have a.
I have not looked at any of them, no, we've just talked because we knew, you know, this workshop's coming up, and we knew that code enforcement was an issue, I knew the code was an issue, but we had just talked about a solution as far as getting our code up to date, and so that's as far as we got, because. And so that's as far as we got because. That's why we're here.
So if we got our code up to date. Then what will be our next report?
Well, then we should be able to proceed with some kind of code enforcement. You're talking about staff time again. I mean, it's all gonna boil down to that and and money and resources. Some of the other options I'm looking at are talking to the the county. And trying to see if we can get that IGA talk back up again, and they have been receptive this time a little bit more. We're gonna bundle it with some other services, so it looks like that we maybe have that conversation. Dealing with code enforcement, planning and building, which right now would be like the trifecta of help for us. That would be the best. Case scenario. In which case we would. Use some of our planning money that we have. You know, and enable it to where we give them some money and they can do all those those services, but. That's gonna be, you know, that's that's a work in progress. That's talks and dealing and trying to see what how it would work. Meanwhile, I I do think the getting our ordinances cleaned up would be the best. Case scenario.
And and any of us can do that, right? Any of us can work on those.
Well, we'll get you. I I'll bring you back. Gary and I will work on getting one that works and we'll bring it back in another workshop and you guys can look at it. And make sure that's what you wanna see and we'll we'll work on how it would, how enforcement would work and talk more about that.
Another point I thought might be worth bringing up was our budget has five hundred dollars in it for code enforcement. Probably need more money, right, to do code enforcement?
Depends on what, depends on this code we bring back. Well, it, I guess it would depend on, I mean, I guess the. I guess the the council needs to decide. What the objective is for code enforcement. And I know. Our code is is heavy on abatement. It also does have some fines, but that all needs to be worked out, but. What's the objective? Because I think for what we have in staff time and what we have in in doable. This, if that's a word. The fines are the way to go. It's just. Like some of these properties, you're not gonna see abatement. You're not gonna see it cleaned up. And I still have a question, and Gary and I are gonna still discuss, but. I don't know how we foreclose if we don't have a property tax and we can't foreclose on property. So I don't, I don't know how we would take back a property. I need to learn that and maybe that's doable, but nothing I've ever come across and maybe Gary can explain that to me, but. Later. And so. If you're levying fines, you you, one, you don't get the property cleaned up. It just kind of sits there until you can get it, but. Two, you're, you know, you may never see the fine either, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's. It's not gonna be a money making procedure, that's for sure.
Oh, it isn't. No. Yeah.
So. Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a cost. So you think that five hundred dollars is okay in there until we?
No, I I think you're gonna have some, and Gary, correct me, and maybe get in, you can get into the procedure a little bit more, a hearing examiner versus the court. Versus abatement versus a warrant. I there there's costs. You definitely have legal costs in there. And I I am, I don't know what those would be. But you're definitely gonna be out money. I was checking around today. Cities our size to see how they do code enforcement, like what they do, and almost all of them have a code enforcement. Person, and it's not their city man. For lack of. You know, and I wanna keep saying it, but they they have the resources and that's where they put it, so.
Another question I had about abatement for the cost. Maybe Gary might be able to help with this. Could a company come in and donate their, a a construction company is fully licensed and bonded, come in and donate. A hundred percent of the labor to get it cleaned up to help the city save money? A gesture of goodwill, is would the city be? Covered in that scenario?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
We're investigating that now. The first step would be to check with our insurer. Because we're using a volunteer. For code enforcement, which. Is different from having somebody sitting in City Hall and typing out a document. Potential liability. One of the reasons that. Not much enforcement was done prior to Melissa was. The people that were subject to the investigation. Basically threatened the city manager. And without a police presence, it's pretty dangerous for. A staff member, let alone a volunteer. To. Perform the duties of a compliance officer. So we'd wanna check with the insurer to be sure there was a way to do that and still be protected.
I think I I was asking a little bit, I do appreciate that information, but I was asking a little bit different questions as far as. Actually going in and abating the property.
Clean up.
Let's say, you know, the the property's covered in trash, we're gonna go in and actually bait it. Could a company with their own liability insurance and their own coverages of construction company do that abatement for? No cost to the city.
Well, the first thing would have have to happen. Would be getting a search warrant or inspection warrant from the municipal judge. And you can only do that under the authority of the city. So. That warrant would have to be requested by a city official, in this case, Melissa. She would have to specify in the warrant. Who is gonna be doing the search, what they were looking for, what regulation. Is being violated, or at least we have probable cause of such. And then the warrant would be issued at that point. Then the city could use somebody else to go into the property and abate it. But the city would have to initiate. The legal mechanism to get that company on the property.
And then Gary, just because I get confused about this too, if it's vehicles versus materials. So if it's vehicles. That's a whole different procedure, right? I mean, they have to be to go through a whole different.
Abating. A vehicle is basically considered to be impoundment. And there's. A whole section in the ORS about. The procedures for impounding vehicles. That's a lot different than. Your ability to go on the property and. Remove tires or junk or solid waste. Entirely different process, much more complicated and subject to statutory procedures.
Were you, were you saying, Nikki? I thought maybe you were trying to say. I approached the property owner and said, hey. I'll clean this up for you. Will you let me? Is that, is that what you're, is that what you're saying, or?
No, I was saying more like we go through the procedures of abatement, but, I mean. Doing it as a friendly neighborhood gesture, I don't know, I mean.
Clearly, if there's a voluntary, there's permission from the property owner, yes. You could have a company go on the property. Again, I would make sure that. Since they're representing the city. You know, regardless of. How you look at it, we have to make sure that the city's liability covers that. In terms of the injury, the, any injury to the. The property that occurs during the abatement, injury to the property owner, injury to. An employee of the company. We don't want the city liable under any circumstances. But if it's just, you know, a representative of the company goes to the. The property owner and says, hey, I'll clean up your mess. That's between private individuals and the city isn't. Involved, and that would be okay. As long as it isn't under the authority of the city's compliance actions.
And we would have to set up. We, would we do an RFP or do we just take bids for companies to do? Do abatement if we were gonna go that route?
No, because unless you have a cleanup in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. All you do is have to get some bids from local companies.
Okay.
I have a couple more things to bring up. So in twenty twenty. The municipal court has some. Work session that they did talking about. Setting up the municipal court. And in the. City Council goals of twenty twenty two is to set up a municipal court. So I know Gary couldn't join us today, unfortunately, but. Is that still a viable viable option for us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's an option. It was already, when I got here in twenty twenty two, it it had never been used. I I believe they had never used it. I mean, that's what I hear. Yeah. Yeah, and so they set it up, but it was never used. So I'm not sure how that, I I have never talked to Gary or had a chance to talk to him either. I'm I'm. New to that part of it as you guys are. So Gary, Gary Milliman, not Gary Darnell. And so, yeah, it's an option. If he was here, he would be here to talk to you about that and what that looks like. There's there's different procedures. So you have, you have like a judge, which I still don't know the whole, I I don't know how that works as well. I didn't, I've never dealt with that. Setup. I've always dealt with the hearing examiner setup that Gary's talking about. That's how we did it. Or you have the county help you, which is another setup that I was, the county came in and helped. And so those are all options. It's just a matter of of which way you go.
So if we did use the municipal court, then we could. Assess fines that way and collect fines that way.
I think, I I don't know how they, I mean, I assume it works like a hearing. I, Gary, do you know anything more about it? I know. I assume it works just like a hearing examiner in some respects.
Well, yes, to some extent, the city would basically. Be the prosecutor. You would present the case to the the judge. The other side would have the ability to. Testify, bring witnesses. The judge would, if they agreed with the city. Could institute a fine. The fine, depending on how your. Your nuisance ordinance was constructed. If it was in Lane County, for instance, the judge would look at your compliance matrix, see if you figured it out reasonably. And. Set the fine accordingly. A certain percentage of that fine would go towards the court. And the city would get the remainder. And the nice thing about that is the judge could. Later issue a judgment if if the the fine wasn't paid. It's something the hearings official can't do.
So a hearings official would just make a determination and then it would stop there. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
A hearing official would just make a determination. And stop there as opposed to municipal judge being able to.
Well, the the hearings official would. What normally happens is that the city will issue a citation. If the the owner doesn't contest it, then. Basically, the the penalty associated with the citation would be levied and the city could place a lien on the property. If. The hearings examiner or hearings official is only used if the. Respondent, the the property owner contests the citation. Then there would be a hearing and basically the hearings official would either uphold or dismiss the citation.
I think we should instruct the staff to look into updating our ordinances so we have something that we can enforce. And it works for this city. And then also look into the options of a municipal judge or. Enforcing officer. Or whatever.
Yeah, so. If you. Will get that information. I'm sure one of us can. Put that together. And what if that ordinance?
Yeah, I'll I'll bring you back the draft ordinance. That's not a problem. I guess. I guess you're gonna need to decide what procedure. You wanna use. I I guess if we throw, I don't, I. We don't wanna have an ordinance that has a kitchen. Oh, well, maybe we do. That has, where it allows for everything, but I've never seen it. Maybe it's out there. But you kind of need, and maybe we need more information, and maybe it would be helpful if that's why Gary was here to talk about the judge side, but. Because I I. I don't. I don't know why it wasn't implemented. I don't know what. Why the reason why it wasn't working. And so without seeing all that. Mit counsel. Yeah, and I still. You still, I mean, either way, we still gotta update our ordinance because, like I said, some of these, I I, of course, we all know which ones we're thinking of, the real. The the ones that are what quote obvious. Obvious nuisances, but they have a combination. I mean, there's vehicles and. And waste, junk. And so you're almost taking two different processes in to, if you were to abate. If you're fining them, there's a, that's. I don't know, maybe they can be combined in one, the same fines, but. I know you have to document, I know you have to take pictures, I know you have to post, and I know you have to send notice, and I know you have to put files together. Again, staff time. So how? The process is disjointed and you have five days for this, but then ten days for this, but you have to notify them and they get a, they get a chance to. Speak, but it's past the five days or ten days and you've already abated and. And a lot of times I will tell you, and I know Gary has told me this too, is. Because of the laws and because of the property. Being on private property. They will give, judges will give you time after time and a lot of time and a lot of excuses. And so some of these go out a year. They're not quick turnarounds, so. How we write our code and how we enforce and how the procedure goes from there is is crucial, that it can be followed. And it can be followed without. Diligently, I mean.
Well, when I think at the end of the day, too. We do all this, it's up to you to carry it through. So will you be? Willing and able to make the time to do it?
Willing and able is different from creating time, you know, so.
Will you be able to create time?
I don't, I feel like that's a trick question. I mean, I guess I'm salaried. So, yeah, I mean, I can come in on Saturdays and do do code abatement. You know, I feel like there's enough mistakes being made in my regular work and I can't make the connections I'm supposed to be doing as a city manager for other things that are supposed to be happening and doing. And so. It's priorities. It's it's what, you know, and then, you know, how much time and a job you want me to spend, how many hours, I'm here at seven. It's priorities. It's, it's what, you know, and then, you know, how much time and a job you want me to spend, how many hours? I'm here at seven thirty.
Yeah, I, I know you're assuming busy. Is there any possibility of any volunteers being able to help with anything that?
I, I have asked about that, um, yes and no. So the yes is yes, we can have volunteers come in and put together files and do files and complaints. Uh, the key is, um, it has to be consistent, it has to be done the same, and you have to have them. Work it like a job, and it can't be, I've started this case and it's over here, but oh, I'm going on vacation, I'm not gonna be around, I'm not doing it. The one that I know that does it as a volunteer in the city is she works it like a job. She's there eight to five. She does her little files, she does all the code enforcement, she's a volunteer. But she doesn't take off and say, I'm not gonna be here today because I'm going to the ocean or I'm gonna go up on the dunes, or I can't be here because, I mean, she works it like she, it's her job. And so it works. Um, the other thing is you have to be very careful when you're going out and doing investigations, if it's a volunteer, they're, again, like Gary said, they're representing the city. And so you have to be very careful. Um, our insurance told me that um, they would want people to have training. In handling um, people and, and uh, hustle environments, and so um. There's a little bit of that, and again, you'd want it to be consistent. You don't want fifteen different people in the city going out and doing code enforcement and opening up separate, different kinds of files and. Having that many people involved, so yes. And no.
Can you call some members help?
I don't think you can because of who you are and your elected officials, and I think it goes towards, um. It, it comes across like a police officer would come across, kinda like. It gives that, like, um, I, oh, Gary, maybe you could help me out here. It has to do with electeds in your, in your authority and how it would come across.
Um, I would discourage it. Because depending on how the ordinance is written. It may very well be that you will be sitting as a decision maker on an appeal. So if you're involved at all in the processing or administration of a citation. You would have to recuse yourself um, for that hearing. So, you know, and you never know when there's gonna be an appeal. So the best procedure is if you're an elected official, don't get involved.
Makes sense. Understandable. So. Then at least we're on the right track and we're finding out what we can and cannot do. By law. Yeah, by law. Um, now I don't just want somebody jumping really willing and doing whatever they want, so.
It sounds like, that's like step one really is to just firm up the ordinance and the process. Yeah. That's like an almost be simplified, basically. A, a little clearer than it is now. We, we have to have a, we have to have a process to follow before we can. Before we can do it, we just can't. Do it on the fly.
Correct.
But, you know, I, I would, I would think step one would be to solve it. Set of rules first.
Yeah, I agree. Should we touch bases with Gary before doing that? To see about.
Okay, Gary Milliman, sorry, yeah, I knew what you meant, um, yeah, I, what I'll do is, um. The city attorney Gary Darnell and I uh, will, will kinda work on an ordinance, a draft or bring you back some looks for you guys. Um, perhaps in another workshop, and then also at that same time, well, Gary should be back from out of state and he should be able to attend, and he can give you his insights on a. How to do the judge um, portion of it. And see where we go. I need to look into, uh, Gary, did you find, are we? Is, I know we both, you and, you're in Lane County, so we're try, I'm trying to, can we really, can, I need to find out if we can, if we can foreclose on a property. If they have liens. And there's no property tax.
Yes.
We can?
Well, yeah, just like um. Private citizen suing uh, a neighbor for a violation and getting a judgment. I don't think the fact that you don't have a property task, tax. Prohibits you from filing a lien.
Oh, no, 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 I know we can put a lien on a property, but you had talked about how to get, how to get that lien. The only way to get recovery. Would be for the property to be foreclosed or for them to sell.
Right, and you know, foreclosure is between private individuals as, as much as between municipalities and, and citizens. So.
That's interesting.
I can do a little more um. Investigation into that, but my first assumption is that yes, you can do it.
That, that would be, that would be attractive to light side, I think, because I think that's been part of the problem is having these huge liens, but then there's no way to recoup. Until, yeah, yeah.
You, you put a lien on the property, if it sells, you get a portion of the purchase price. Um, you hope that the county doesn't foreclose for back taxes, um, which will wipe out your lien. Um. So probably the only way you're gonna collect is if that property is sold, or.
We can't.
You in, institute the foreclosure yourself.
Can we jump in before, so, yeah, but the, the money that we. I'll talk to you more about it. We're getting in the weeds, but I have.
We have to pay the property tax on it.
Well, I, what would we do? Yeah, see, then you've got another, we've seen a whole different ballgame of. Of money issues. But, okay.
We have to sell quick.
Gotta clean it up. So you take the money to clean it up, is that what you do? Well, so, yeah, that's a good question, because if you foreclosed on it, you're not getting your money back. You just took the property, but the property's still a mess, so you'd have to. Clean it up anyway, out of your own pocket, to sell it, to get. Your money out of it, so it might not be the best deal.
Well, yeah, that's kind of like a catch twenty-two there.
It's not an easy answer.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like we're headed in the right direction then, so step one will be to. Pretty good with Gary and, or get with him and.
Yes, so we'll bring you back um, the draft. Draft ordinance, and then I'll get, when I bring you that back, I'll also get with Gary Milliman and have him come and. Talk to you about the judge thing, how it works.
Do you want to set another date?
Um, you can, I would need to be in November because October we have.
A lot of fun.
Yeah. And I, I don't wanna put pressure on Gary to have to.
Yeah. Maybe we can set a date off for our next regular meeting during our next regular meeting.
Have a workshop for the November meeting?
Yeah.
Well, you're having a meeting on October twenty-sixth, so you can talk about it then, and I might have some headway. We have the L O C conference, so, but. I have some headway on that.
Right, is there anything else? If we have any more discussion or questions for?
I just wanna thank everybody on Zoom and in the crowd here. And uh, we're gonna make like sideboard.
Yes, thank you to the people who joined on Zoom, um, and Gary and Jason, I appreciate you guys having the idea to join. Yes, thank you very much. All right, now we'll adjourn, and the meeting will be October twenty-sixth.
Yep, and uh.